All right, good evening. Good evening, I'm going to call us to order. Thank you everyone for your patience and thank you for having a chance to find seats and get yourselves ready for what I think is going to be a very interesting meeting. Welcome everyone. And the first thing that we do is to call the roll and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Board Member Bennett.
Here.
Board Member Tessler's absent, sitting in for her tonight is guest board member Sharon Blasey.
Here.
Board Member Nanki.
Here.
Board Member Claussen.
Here.
Board Member Dickey.
Here.
Board Member Thomas.
Here.
Board Member Benardz.
Here.
Board Member Clem.
Here.
Chair Peterson.
Here.
Thank you. All right, we'll have the pledge of allegiance, please join me.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now have the approval of the special meeting agenda. Member Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the special meeting agenda of the Urban Renewal Agency for March 25th with additions, deletions, and revisions.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Dickey to approve the special meeting agenda with additions and deletions and corrections. And I believe that our city attorney Randall Tosh has a couple of typos to discuss.
Yes, I just wanted to note that on Agenda Item 4D, the integrated loan with the terms of the de jure loans under Section 4, those dates should be 2013. So we'll fix that on the final.
Okay. All those in favor of the approval for the special meeting agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Member Bennett, is there a motion for the...
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Action items?
Sorry.
Yes, no, no.
Madam Mayor, I move the action items as a calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Claussen, oh, Nanki, thank you, to approve those as a consent calendar. Is there discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, I see, excuse me.
The calendar note. We just moved to make them a calendar note.
Yes. Oh, now we have to approve the calendar. All right. Counselor, or, excuse me, Member Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the action items calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Benardz to move the action items as a consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we have, we had no one signed up, by the way, this evening for public comment under the URA. There's no further agenda items for the URA and I will close that, adjourn that meeting. Okay, and we will open the meeting of the Salem City Council for March 25th, 2013. And would the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Tessler's absent, sitting in for tonight is guest counselor Sharon Blasey.
Here.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Claussen.
Here.
Counselor Dickey.
Here.
Counselor Thomas.
Here.
Counselor Benardz.
Here.
Counselor Clem.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here. Thank you. Counselor Bennett, would you please move additions and deletions?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move additions, deletions, and revisions to the agenda for the city council meeting March 25th.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benardz to move the additions and deletions to the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We now have time for council comment. I would like to open by saying how pleasant it is to have Sharon Blasey with us again. We're so pleased you're here. You were sitting over there for about six or eight months. We're pleased to see you as a visitor this evening. Welcome. And are there comments by counselors? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to a proclamation that is my pleasure to read. And I don't have, no, I do have, I'll stand up here. Stand up to do the, is this on?
Yep.
Okay, stand to read this. Because I think this is a really important proclamation for our community and it's something that it's important for us to think of, not just today, not just this month coming up, but all year long. And this proclamation is to mark and recognize Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas every child deserves to live in a safe, loving, caring family. And whereas in 2011, there were 11,599 reported victims of child abuse and neglect in Oregon, of which 19 resulted in death. Of those reported cases, 1,087 were victims in Marion County. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure each family has the support they need to raise their children in a healthy environment and whereby prevention of child abuse remains the best protection for our children, we must increase public awareness about child abuse and how we can prevent it. It takes a collaborative effort among schools, government agencies, faith-based organizations, community groups, businesses, and law enforcement agencies to succeed in this effort. Now therefore, I, Anna M. Peterson, the mayor of the city of Salem, do hereby proclaim April 2013 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and invite the entire community to join me in preventing child abuse in Salem and to encourage all citizens to protect our children. Thank you very much. I want to take a moment to note a very special person in our audience this evening, Jane Downing. Would you please stand up? And she has left a brochure with several of us to talk about the hope and safety in our community, Hope and Safety Home, that's currently in the process of raising funds. And you are executive director of the Women's Crisis Service, doing an outstanding job and very important in this entire process of trying to keep families and children safe. So thank you very much, Jane. Thank you. Well, we have many people here this evening who have come, I believe, to testify probably about coal trains and maybe about other things. But in front of me, I have quite a list, so I'm pleased to be able to go through that. I wanted to note, just so that you know, and to sort of clarify a little change that I'm making to the agenda, is that I do have a mayor's item toward the end of the meeting called the Letter Regarding Coal Trains. And what I'm going to do is to ask council's approval to move that letter actually to the end of the public comment time, so that you may hear that discussion for that and then be able to complete the rest of your evenings without having to sit here for too long a time. So Counselor Bennett, I will just make that, or would you like to make that motion that we move that item?
Madam Mayor, I move the council suspend the rules in order, right, keep going, okay.
10B, okay.
In order to move Item 10.1B to follow public comment period.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benardz to amend the agenda. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. First up, to testify this evening, or make comment, I guess I should say, Evan White and following Evan, Hans West.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. I'm Evan White, 4553 Brock Loop South with Salem Beyond Coal. We thank each of you for the countless hours you give to our community. Based upon announced plans, approximately 100,000 uncovered coal cars would go through Salem every year. And then these 100,000 coal cars would turn around and go back for more coal. No one covers coal cars. No one is required to cover coal cars. Coal cars can give off large quantities of coal dust. No one regulates coal dust emissions and there is no commercially feasible way to completely eliminate coal dust emissions. Each of you has the recent health assessment by Multnomah County, which explains why citizens should be concerned. In Salem, the Can Do Association notes that the train tracks go right through low-income areas where citizens are often uninsured and least able to pay for healthcare. The Elna Association notes that coal train traffic threatens property values and has no economic benefit to Salem. As one member of the NESKA Association said, "They will not even be stopping for lunch." This is just as well because no one regulates the amount of time a train can block a crossing. As the Cessna Association notes, "The tracks bisect Salem and we have few grade-separated crossings." The 1.3-mile coal trains would block traffic between downtown and the eastern half of our city, disrupt transit, and slow emergency service responders. Madam Mayor, this is a look-before-you-leave issue. Fifteen out of the 18 neighborhood associations in Salem and all the ones who have voted for it support you in the request for a programmatic or comprehensive environmental impact statement. The other three associations have not yet voted. We hope this will be indicated on the final copy of the letter and that you will also CC the Army Corps of Engineers in our congressional delegation. Our group has already turned in 1,260 petitions from local citizens and 50 from local businesses. Tonight, I'm giving an additional 90 petitions to the city recorder. There are many in the audience tonight who care about this issue and have chosen to forego their right to speak. Would you please stand at this time?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your testimony?
Yes.
Are there questions for Mr. White? Yes, Counselor Claussen.
Mr. White, I appreciate your effort on this. I know you were at the South Gateway Meeting with me last week and good presentations and good information you're putting together. So I just like it when I see people who are active and taking a lead on things that they care about. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll proceed. Hans West and then Sophia Seegrist. Probably not saying that correctly. Mr. West, and you have three minutes and at the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on at the end of three, it's a red light.
And the amber light is?
Here.
Right there. There you are. There you are. Okay.
Well, good evening and thank you, Mayor, and thank you, counselors, for allowing me to speak. My name is Hans West. I live at 545 Waldo Avenue, Southeast. I'm a retired physician and have decided to get into something a little different now. So my goal tonight is to briefly discuss the health consequences or what we anticipate the health risk would be with coal trains coming through town. And I think the main effect would be from coal dust. I mean, and when you look at the data, I think that's the big player. And certainly, when you burn coal, you've got stuff that really does cause multiple well-documented health effects. With coal dust, yes, there's stuff that's documented and basically there's black lung disease, a form of pneumoconiosis, that's due to chronic exposure to coal dust in miners and those who work in enclosed facilities processing coal. And this causes significant morbidity and early mortality. There's also aggravation, aggravating effects on those with chronic lung disease and those with chronic bronchitis. If they're exposed to coal dust on a regular basis, it makes those diseases worse. Finally, coal dust can worsen attacks of asthma in those who are predisposed. There is an addition, well, there are in addition studies trying to show correlation and do show, I think, but we need more information and that's part of why we're here, that do show an effect on cardiovascular disease. And there was a nice study here in 2011 looking at those who work in coal mines and those who work in coal facilities, and they had up to a twofold increased risk of heart attack and death from exposure to the coal dust. And they think that is due to the small coal particulate matter that is in the dust and if it gets small enough down to micrometers, it can infiltrate well into the lung and even go into the bloodstream. And it has its effects due to chronic inflammatory effects. And that's an area of ongoing study and I think we will learn more about that. Risk of cancer seems to be real. They've done some studies in Appalachia and adjacent counties where they do mountaintop mining versus those counties where they don't. And when they look at those counties and compare cancer rate, there's definitely an increased rate of lung cancer, colon and bladder cancer, and leukemia in those counties where they mine coal. And if they mine more than 4 million tons or something like that, I don't remember the exact number, then that rate goes up even further. So some issues there and I think, once again, deserving of more study and more data. I didn't mention that coal dust contains, of course, defined particulate matter, contains heavy metals, or maybe I did mention lead, mercury, arsenic, and cadmium. And these can have real, real effects on people. And we would certainly have to worry about these trains as they go past and leak coal into school playgrounds, et cetera. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions of Mr. West? All right, thanks for coming down. Sophia Seegrist and then Raleigh Wisbrock. Welcome and state your name and address. You can actually pull that down a little more so it's comfortable for you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and counselors. My name is Sophia Seegrist and I live at 2766 Weatherford Court and I'm a freshman at Willamette University. Willamette was founded in 1842 before statehood and at a very young age, I dreamt about attending Willamette because of its dedication to helping students develop the tools they need to overcome society's many challenges and find success in both their personal and professional life. I currently hope to graduate from Willamette University as a politics major and then go on to the Willamette School of Law before entering legislation to work on policy reform within the postures care system. I'm one of the many independent thinkers whom the university tries to attract, determined to make a positive impact on society. Willamette's a major contributor to the Salem economy with 870 employees and an operating budget of $138 million. Our combined enrollment is 2,915 students, including Tokyo International University with which we are affiliated. Our enrollment is almost the same as the combined enrollment of three nearby schools, which are also located adjacent to the train tracks, North Salem High School, Parish Middle School, and Bush Elementary School. It may be easy for some people to take Willamette for granted despite the fact that we've been educating young minds in Salem for more than a century and a half. But I'd like you to imagine yourself as a high school student, visiting the campus with those or her parents. And during the day, you see not one, but four coal trains going by. Would that make you want to attend to Willamette? You may be surprised to learn that air quality in Salem is already poorer than the national average. With the National Average Air Quality Index at 100, the air quality index of zip code 97301 is 110, which is poorer than Los Angeles, California. Willamette competes for both students and faculty with many other colleges and universities in the area. So I urge you to please think carefully about the negative impact that additional air pollution will have on Willamette and its current and potential students. Please don't take us for granted. If you do not have the heart to say no to coal trains in general, at least have the courage to endorse our governor's request for an environmental impact statement so that we will know the full consequences of coal transport through Salem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions of Ms. Seegrist? Well, thank you for coming this evening. Appreciate your testimony. Raleigh Wisbrock and then Andy Harris. Yes?
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Raleigh Wisbrock. I live at 3440 Balsam Drive in Salem. And I am here to implore you to support the letter to the governor. Coal trains through Salem present profound risks to our community. Risks to our environment, risks to our health, risk to my health is one thing, but risk to my grandchildren's health is unacceptable. Risk to our transportation system, citizens having to wait at crossings, business having to wait at crossings to get commerce underway, health and safety vehicles having to wait at crossings and risking life and limb. I think our property values are also at risk because of the health, environmental, and transportation issues. I think our property tax is at risk because of those items. It's also interesting to me and disturbing that we would underwrite China's ability to outcompete the Pacific Northwest by supplying them with cheap, filthy coal, the burning of which is going to pollute, again pollute, not just the transportation through our environment, but as it blows across the Pacific Ocean, again pollute our community. And why should we give the Chinese industrial complex a competitive advantage by being able to burn cheap, filthy coal when the United States, the Pacific Northwest, is grappling with an energy policy that protects our environment and our children and our economy? So I implore you to support the letter to the governor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions of Counselor? I'm going to have to ask people in the audience, please don't applaud.
Point like this.
Are there questions from counselors? None? All right, thank you very much. Andy Harris, welcome.
Madam Mayor, thank you.
Nice to see you.
Thank you. I'm a 37-year resident of Salem. I now live in Portland, I hope that's okay.
Well, all right.
Coal companies' singular argument for coal export terminals is the creation of jobs. The reality is really quite the opposite. Coal trains are accompanied by soot and noise. They adversely affect local business, property values, and tourism. Organic farmers say that they cannot promote their crops as organic if they are coated with coal dust. Mint growers say that washing coal dust off of the mint crops destroys the mint. Coal trains average 125 cars and are about a mile and a quarter in length. That blocks traffic at grade-level crossings for about five to seven minutes because they're traveling at 15 to 25 miles an hour through the towns. Such delays not only impede local businesses, but they block emergency vehicles like ambulances, fire trucks, and police, costing precious minutes for cardiac patients and stroke patients. Coal trains also need to be left uncovered, as you've heard, to lower the risk of spontaneous combustion. The trains passing through Salem would be from the Powder River Basin of Wyoming and Montana. It's a very friable, powdery coal. Coal dust contains a number of heavy metals like mercury, lead, arsenic, and cadmium. Also, it contains polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, some of which are carcinogenic and are associated with lower IQ. Coal dust is a trigger for asthma and it also causes chronic bronchitis and emphysema. Coal trains also emit more diesel emissions, which cause asthma, heart disease, and are known carcinogen, particularly lung cancer. And nitrogen oxides from diesel engines are a major contributor of smog. For people living within earshot of the tracks, the incessant rumbling of these heavy trains and the piercing whistles contribute to sleep disorders, that's no surprise, but also to hypertension, heart disease, depression, anxiety, and learning disabilities. So the mining, shipping, and burning of coal is really irresponsible in the 21st century. We know a lot more about this toxic fossil fuel than we did back in the days of Charles Dickens. To promote coal is to defy the laws of physics and chemistry, to ignore very serious health concerns, and to endanger life on the planet with irreparable climate change. The more cheap coal that America exports to China and Asia, the more this will drive down the price of coal and the more China is going to be burning coal as its chief energy source. So we need to act responsibly and I would urge the city council to ask for an environmental impact statement and also a health impact assessment. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Dr. Harris? All right, thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Laura Stevens and following her, Patty Tipton.
Adjust it down a bit. Just then, there we go. Thank you for the tip on that. My name's Laura Stevens. I'm an organizer for the Sierra Club. I do not live in Salem, but I'm a lifelong Oregonian and I returned to Oregon to work on preventing coal export projects from coming about. Returned to Oregon specifically for this purpose. And I want to thank Mayor Peterson, Counselor Bennett, and all of the council members that plan to vote to support this letter for your leadership. We really rely on leaders like you to make sure that the voices of citizens, like all of those that you've seen in front of you, to be heard at the state and federal level. So thank you for that. I'm, yeah, I'm passing around two items. The first is a list of over 30 cities, counties, and other entities that you will join the ranks of if you choose to pass this letter tonight. Really impressive list of folks that have concerns or oppose to coal exports. And the second item is a letter that was released, was submitted today by Governors Inslee and Kitzauer, which adds on to Governor Kitzauer's ask for an area-wide EIS, essentially is asking for more of a similar thing for the impacts of coal exports to be studied and thoroughly studied by federal individuals. And just want to add that I hope that you pass the letter tonight and that I also hope and urge you to continue to keep asking the important questions about how coal exports would impact your citizens, the residents of Salem, the health impacts, the safety impacts, the environmental impacts. All of these things are very serious, very serious risks and it requires vigilance from our city leaders. So thank you again.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? All right, thank you. Patty Tipton and then Alan Scott.
My name is Patty Tipton and I live at 3240 Hamel Street, Salem 97301. I'm also the chair for Lansing Neighborhood. And I'm here to tell you that Lansing wishes not to have coal trains go through the Salem area for environmental and health reasons. And we just want to add our name to the number. And personally, I don't want them either. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? All right, thank you very much. Alan Scott and then Belinda Scott.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. My name is Alan Scott. I live in Ward 1 and people ask me all the time why I wear a hat. I find it really, really helpful.
Our clock still works even if your hat is there.
Counselor Bennett asked me to do that because he enjoys the things that I have to say.
Okay.
Obviously, I'm here tonight because I am not excited about coal trains. But if you'll notice on the list, I didn't mark opposed or support because I wasn't sure. The clarity of the letter didn't seem to me to identify a strong enough support for Governor Kitzauer. I looked at City of Milwaukee's resolution that they passed and one of their statements is the city fully supports Governor John Kitzauer.
is, "The city fully supports Governor John Kitzhauer's request to the federal agency prepare blah, blah, blah." I think that's the sort of thing I'm looking for, is a statement that clearly says, it could say it in one short paragraph, that we support, I support, Governor Kitzhauer's request for a study. We're not asking to stop, I'm not asking to stop coal trains because I think once the study is done, it'll be clear, and I won't have to take a position. And that way, my quiet zone will go through without any problems. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Appreciate you-
Unless you want to hear about my mother-in-law again last time I was here.
No, that was sufficient that night. Thank you. Are there questions by councilors for Mr. Scott?
I don't have plenty of time.
All right. Mr. Scott, thank you. You and your hat may take your seat. Belinda Scott?
Thank you, Mayor and councilpeople. I believe my husband said it eloquently, and the comments that I read have been covered by today's-
Thank you very much. All right. Bill Fuji? Am I saying that correctly?
You are.
All right. Good. And then Janet Parker following him.
Yeah, either side, we're just not. Right or yeah?
Mayor Peterson and Council, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Bill Fuji. I live at 3390 Holiday Drive South since 1956. This is your moment in history. It is not about the provincial business of coal trains passing through Salem. Every day, many, many freight cars and tank cars of higher risk pass your borders. We are asking you to endorse a larger question about the environmental impact of coal being burnt for thermal electric energy in China. If we do so, we send a clear signal to the nations of China and India that it's okay to add fossil fuel pollution to the Himalayas. Those of us that have taken high school chemistry remember that acid on limestone releases carbon dioxide. So you get the privilege of not only shipping them your coal, but to get the privilege of getting a second hit of greenhouse gas in the environment. I beseech you to ask the federal government, the Commerce Secretary and the Secretary of the Interior, to understand the ramifications and the long-term consequences of adding to the global warming situation internationally as well as the impacts locally. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Fuji? Thank you for coming down and testifying this evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Janet Parker, and I actually, well, my address is 1055 Oxford Street Southeast in Salem, but I am also the new Senior Pastor at First Congregational United Church of Christ on 700 Marion Street Northeast. And so it's a pleasure to be here, my very first city council meeting in Salem. And I am here in support of this letter to Governor Kitzhauer. I feel it is absolutely critical on issues like this to do thorough investigation of environmental impacts. And I would just like to say a little bit about why I'm in support of this. I am in support of this on moral grounds. Unfortunately, the environment has been too, has been lately framed as a political issue and a partisan issue, but faith communities see this as a moral issue. My denomination, the United Church of Christ, has been actively working on environmental justice issues since 1987 when it worked to release the Toxic Waste and Race Report, which helped spark the environmental justice movement and led to the understanding of environmental racism as a phenomenon in our society. My denomination and increasingly people of all faiths and all faith communities are working on environmental issues as moral issues because we increasingly understand the interconnectedness of environmental harm and human social justice and racial justice and the impacts on vulnerable communities that are usually sighted closer to things like train tracks and toxic waste dumps. And so I'm here to urge you to consider the environmental impacts as well as the human impacts that have been stated and the justice issues relating to vulnerable communities of color and low-income communities that would be disproportionately affected. Also, as I've said, this is increasingly uniting people of faith. Pope Francis made the environment a keystone of his inaugural address. It's a moral issue because it affects human life and health, marginal populations disproportionately, and the earth on which life depends. We are all connected, and if we ship coal to China, it will come back to us on air and water currents. And so this does affect us immediately locally with coal dust, but it will ultimately affect all of us through climate change effects. So I urge you to take this seriously, and please study it thoroughly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Are there questions from councilors? All right. Thank you so much. And that concludes those who have signed up for public comment, and I would like to now move, excuse me. Was there someone who wanted to speak who didn't get a chance to sign up?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Please go to the podium and tell me your name, please.
My name is David Engen. I live at 1145 14th Street Northeast in Ward 1. We live two blocks east of the railroad tracks on 14th Street. We hear the trains all the time now, and we sometimes go to the Salem Cinema. Sometimes we walk and sometimes we drive. Well, a week or so ago, we picked up a friend, and we were going to drive down, but the tracks were closed on Market Street. So we drove down to the next crossing, the tracks were closed. Now, down to the next crossing, the tracks were closed. The paper said the tracks were closed for 45 minutes, although I heard other people say that that wasn't true. They were closed for over an hour. So what would happen if you needed an ambulance to get to the hospital and you were on the wrong side of the tracks? You'd be screwed. I'm sorry for using that language, but it's true. You know, we don't want that to happen here. That's about all I have to say because it occurred to me when we were doing that, what would happen if there was a coal train on the tracks and we couldn't get through. Thank you very much. I appreciate what all you folks do, and I wouldn't want to do what you're doing. It's just, thank you for your service.
Thank you for coming down. Thank you. Thank you for testifying. Appreciate that. All right. Now, I'm going to thank the council again for suspending the rule so that I might enter my motion at this time. And I move that the City Council authorize a submission of the attached letter related to coal train exports to the Office of Governor Kitzhauer. And I believe also today that we have added to that letter CC to the Secretary of the Interior and to the Army Corps of Engineers. Is that correct? I'm looking for Casey Duncan, correct? All right. Staff has very capably helped put this together with me. All right. So we'll move to the motion. All those in favor say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Clem.
Did you need a second to your motion?
Well, I probably do. Thank you.
Wouldn't want any legalities to, I would second it.
Thank you very much. Counselor Dickey, discussion.
Just a quick question and a comment. First, the comment, I just want to thank all the neighborhood associations who did submit something for this. It's not often that we get a lot of communication from neighborhood associations, and I know that that means that they took the time, they took time out of their meetings to think about this, to talk about this, and then submit a letter. They're not all exactly the same. Some have different issues that they highlighted over others, and so I just want to thank all the neighborhood associations who took the time out to do that. And then my question is, I kind of lost count on how many neighborhood associations actually submitted something. I was trying to keep track as we were going through, so I wonder if we have that information.
I think Mr. Duncan might have that, but we also have indicated that anything that comes in subsequently will also be forwarded. Mr. Duncan, do you have something to add?
I don't have. I don't have an exact number at this time. I believe it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 12. As the Mayor indicated, if you noticed, the date on the letter is April 6th, and West Salem Neighborhood Association will be considering the item at its meeting on April 4th. So we wanted to ensure that all neighborhood associations will have the opportunity to provide input, and then we'll take that and attach it to the letter.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. [applause] We're going to take a quick break here in case people want to adjust where they are in the room or perhaps call it a day. Thanks for attending. All right. If the councilors will please come back to their chairs, we will resume the meeting. All right. Okay. We'll call our meeting back to order, please, and we're going to pick up with Agenda Item 3, the Consent Calendar. Counselor Bennett, would you like to introduce the Consent Calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the Consent Calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Thomas to adopt the Consent Calendar. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have several public hearings this evening, and the first one, would the recorder please introduce the ordinance?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding Ordinance Bill Number 1-13, Proposed Amendments to Salem Revised Code, Chapter 900, Sign Code, to allow internally illuminated freestanding signs for nonprofit membership assembly, recreational and cultural community services, religious assembly, and basic education uses to be within residential zones.
Thank you very much. And do we have a staff report? Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Counselor. I'm Amy Dixon, Planner for the City of Salem. This is a public hearing for Ordinance Bill Number 1-13. The proposed ordinance would allow freestanding signs in residential zones for certain types of entities to be internally illuminated along major streets. I would like to enter the staff report and all of its attachments into record, along with the written testimony we received this morning from West Salem Neighborhood Association and two citizens. Last year, during the adoption process of the Sign Code, some issues were identified. Council directed staff to perform further outreach and return with a recommendation on these issues. Staff recommended amendment on one of these issues, and Council concurred. This is what I'll be speaking to this evening. There are three, excuse me, there are three types of illumination of signs. Externally illuminated by floodlights. Current code would allow this type of illumination for freestanding signs in the residential district. The next type is electronic display. This sign is using a message center. This type of illumination only is allowed by conditional use permit in residential districts. The final type is internally illumination by lights inside a sign covered by plastic faces. Current code does not allow freestanding signs to use this type of illumination in residential districts. Also in the current code, no sign in residential districts are allowed to be illuminated between the hours of midnight and 7:00 a.m. This amendment will not change that. Considerable outreach has been done on the recently adopted Sign Code and this proposed amendment. This morning, we received written testimony from West Salem Neighborhood Association indicating support of the amendment. We also received two citizen comments indicating they were against the amendment. The proposed amendment does two things. First, it allows freestanding signs to use internally illumination when abutting collectors, arterials, parkways, and freeways. The second thing it does is allows only certain entities to use this type of illumination for their freestanding signs. The reason for this amendment is to, is that many community organizations allow the public to use their facility for various types of events. Often, these events are in the evening, where public may be unfamiliar with the location. Without assisting the public, the surrounding residential properties may be affected more by people entering the neighborhood because they are confused, lost, or trying just to figure out where they're going. They may turn around in residential neighborhoods, residential driveways, or slow down in the middle of a street. This type of illumination of freestanding signs with restrictions balances the need to protect the surrounding residential properties and the need of the public to locate the facility. Therefore, staff recommends that Council adopt Ordinance Bill Number 1-13, and after the hearing, advance the bill to second reading for enactment. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. We have one person who has signed up. Alden Mueller?
Mueller.
Mueller? Thank you. Welcome.
He was here early.
Yes.
Thought it was 5:30.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I caught up on my reading.
Good.
My name is Alden Mueller. I reside at 4305 Claxton Court Northeast, and I represent the Northgate Neighborhood Association. I'm the Land Use Chair, and we had a unanimous vote in favor of the sign, of allowing this sign to be illuminated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from councilors? All right. Well, we appreciate you coming down, and we appreciate your participation in the neighborhood. That's an important role in our city, and we appreciate the time you spend with that. All right. Are there any questions of staff? Then I will close, oh, do questions of staff, and then I'll close the hearing. All right. Questions of staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The question that I have, you mentioned that there were two neighborhood associations that opposed the amendment.
No, it was two citizens.
Two citizens?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Other questions of staff? None? All right. Now the hearing will be closed. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Clem to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And would the recorder please introduce the next public hearing?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the Housing and Community Development substantial amendment to the 2012-2013 One Year Action
Thank you. And we have a staff report?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. Rena Peck with Federal Programs Manager for Urban Development. Before you tonight is a request to amend the 2012-2013 Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan. In the fall of each year, the city opens the application process for the Community Development Block Grant program with funding available July 1st of the following year. Applications are received by staff. They're reviewed by the Housing and Urban Development Advisory Committee, then recommendations from that committee are made to council for final funding approval for submission to HUD. The CDBG grant requires, as of May 1st of each year, the city's U.S. Treasury Line of Credit does not exceed 1.5 times the amount of the annual grant award. Any balance over 1.5 is recaptured back into the Treasury any time after, or after May 1st. Prior to May 1st of each year, staff reviews the- Prior to May 1st of each year, staff reviews the balance to ensure that the city is not in jeopardy of having any of those dollars recaptured. In the fall of 2012, staff completed the analysis, and due to prior-year funding set-asides, the city was in target to lose those funds, approximately $300,000. In November of 2012, an RFP was solicited, and staff received four applications. After reviewing the applications against the criteria outlined in the RFP, Mid Valley Women's Crisis Center Services, Center for Hope and Safety, fit the criteria outlined in the RFP. Mid Valley Women's Crisis Service will use the funds to fill a gap to acquire a building located at 680 Cottage Street. The project will help to increase services to individuals and families who are victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, and stalking. As you can see here, I might use my little pointer, but it's not working, so on the west side is Cottage, to the south is Union, and to the east is Winter. The Center for Hope and Safety was not a project that was identified in the 2012-2013 Annual Plan, therefore, the amendment to this plan is required. The Housing and Community Development Consolidated Plan requires all funding requests go through a prescribed citizen comment period. This process was outlined in the Citizen Participation Plan. The Citizen Participation Plan provides the citizens an opportunity to comment on any changes made to the annual plan. Public hearing is required. As of today, the city has not received any comments or concerns about this amendment. Staff recommends approving the amendment and awarding Mid Valley Women's Crisis Center funding for the acquisition of 680 Cottage Street, increasing and expanding services to victims of domestic violence, human trafficking, and sexual violence. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And we have one person who has signed up to testify, Jane Downing. Please come to the microphone. I think you know the drill, the amber light and the red light and the whole thing.
I do. Thank you, Mayor Peterson, City Councilmember, staff. Thank you for the opportunity to come tonight and talk to you about Center for Hope and Safety in our community. For several years now, Mid Valley Women's Crisis Service has seen a huge increase in the number of victims and survivors who are coming to us. Primarily, that's because, unfortunately, we've had more than 140 women and children murdered in the state of Oregon due to domestic violence. Six of those occurred in the Salem-Kaiser area in the last two years. Domestic violence homicides were actually 45% of the homicides in Marion County just last year. And so, one of the things that happened was folks started calling us, which is exactly what we want. We want them to come to us and get help and support. But unfortunately, it was not unusual for us to show up in the office, our beautiful old historic home that we love, on mornings, and find three or four people waiting to meet with us for restraining orders, help with restraining orders, or protection orders, or, you know, other forms of protection orders, or just safety planning. We heard from so many folks calling in on our crisis line, saying, "I'm afraid I'm the next one. I'm afraid my children are the next one." And, you know, we've been in that office for 21 years, and we didn't -- if you've come over and seen us, you've seen how crowded we are. All the staff is pretty much crowded together. We're okay with that. But when it started to impact the folks that we try to serve, then it wasn't okay. We didn't have private meeting spaces to be able to meet with them. We were having to turn women away from support group because our childcare room was too full. That's unacceptable. And we started saying, "What do we do about this?" And in that same week that we started having those conversations, we heard about these funds. $300,000 to be able to look for something. We found an office right down the street from us, which will make it so easy for folks to come. It has private meeting spaces. It has large rooms for support group and childcare and play therapy, all the things that we want to offer to folks. This space has it. And so, it's wonderful for us to have this opportunity to make sure that we're providing the services in our community that are needed. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you for this opportunity. We're doing everything we can to raise all the funds to be able to do that, and we're well on our way. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much, and thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I'm sure many others in this room, for all the work that you and the others at the Women's Crisis Service are doing every day. Thank you. Counselors, questions? Councilor Dickey, and then Councilor Clem, and then Counselor Benars.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming down, and thank you for the work that you do. I wish we didn't have to have your service in our community, actually, but you guys do great work over there. And I did have a quick question. So, you're building the Center for Hope and Safety. Is that a new name for the Women's Crisis Center, or is that something -- are you rebranding too?
Well, we're doing a bit of both. We are -- we thought, you know, this is the perfect time to make sure that all folks know that our services are available to them. We've been serving men who are victimized for many, many years, and yet, this -- talking about the Center for Hope and Safety gives us the opportunity to make sure that they know that we are a space that they can come to. So, it's a bit of both, just to make sure that folks know that we're available to them.
Councilor Clem?
Yeah, that was my question. Thank you.
Counselor Benars?
Thank you, Jane, for doing all the things that you've done for our community. I have been in your office space, actually through the works of Rotary, but I know how crowded it has been in there. Can you address a little bit on how much you can increase your services to this community? The numbers of people, the quantity, can you -- any idea?
Well, I'm actually in the same place where I actually wish that we didn't have to need our services at all, and I'd love to tell you that we're actually going to serve less, but just do it better. But what I realize is that probably more folks will come to us. Because one thing is, this campaign has actually increased our profile, and we've actually had people coming to us saying, you know, "We think -- we've been here for 40 years, and we think everyone knows about us." But it's still amazing to have people say, "Wow, I didn't know there was some help and support for me." And so, we know that more people will come. We don't know what that's going to mean totally. We do know it will mean more folks can come to support group. We do know that we're going to be able to serve more individuals who come and just want to meet one-on-one, and their family members and friends. We are going to be able to do all of our trainings there, and even some larger programming, which is going to be very exciting for us. And this space actually gives us the opportunity to do -- to meet our needs right now, but to grow in the future. It actually has a section of it that has already been divided, where we're going to be able to lease that space right now, which will help us. But I have this dream that someday, we're actually going to provide some training for folks while they're with us that can help them become more self-sufficient. So, I feel like it has some pieces for us that we need so desperately right now, and we'll -- we can grow also in the future and provide even more services in our community. So, we're very excited about the possibilities. It's been quite a rollercoaster ride for me, but -- and our staff, but it's an incredible piece.
Well, I look forward to visiting the new space once you're into it.
Wonderful, thank you. Counselor Blasey, and then Counselor Clausen.
Thank you very much. Jane, can you please tell us a little bit about how the community can go about supporting and matching funds? You mentioned briefly that you're doing a lot of other fundraising. Can you tell us just briefly, so we --
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity. Actually, anyone can go to www.hopenafety.org and see about the campaign and where we're at, but they can -- it's several different ways that they can help us. Folks are sponsoring rooms, and we've had seven of them sponsored already. Folks can make a gift of any size, and the community can also say -- what we're saying is take a step towards hope and safety and sponsor a square foot of the building. Now, some folks have teased us and said, "Can I write my name on the square foot?" No, because it's carpeting. But it's wonderful that about 50% of new donors have actually done that, taking a step towards hope and safety. And so, actually, the little drawing that's on your -- in front of you is actually just those $20 steps towards hope and safety so far. So, nearly 3,000 of those have come in, sponsorships of square feet. And then, I've also submitted about 12 grants for the project. And then, we also are going to be selling our current buildings. So, we're going to bring all those different things together and make this a reality, and the community has just been incredible in their support. And we just started talking about this in, you know, December, and we've already had either donations in hand or pledges of over $720,000. So, it's been an incredible piece for us to see how the community is responding to that. Thank you.
All right, further questions? Oh, yes, Counselor Clausen.
Thank you. So, what's the total dollar you're shooting for?
The building itself is $1.1 million. There are -- it needs a new roof and new HVAC system, and that's $134,000. And we have -- we've been recommended for funding for those improvements. And so, then, we've had community members step up to do -- already volunteered to do painting projects and different things like that in the community, for the building. And then, of course, we're going to be, you know, we've already have cubicles donated for all the staff. I mean, folks are just responding tremendously. So, there's going to be the moving costs, the phones, you know, those kinds of things. So, right about in total, about $1.5 million for everything that needs to be done, but a lot of that is in-kind donations that are going to happen.
Okay, and you said you have 700 and something thousand. So, does this, if the 300,000 goes through, does that get you the money to purchase the space, or?
We've already also been approved for bridge financing. So, we have the financing to be able to, with this funding, with the community donations, and the bridge funding, it's going to give us the time to be able to have those grants come through. Because, as you know, grants take several months, and we've already submitted 12 of those, and we're in the final stages of already some of those. And so, it's going to be kind of a combination of all those different things.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. All right, we'll now close the public hearing. And Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion for us?
I do, Madam Mayor, thank you. I'm really pleased to move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselors Thomas and Dickey. Can we do that? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And I'd like to take a moment to say, there's a special event on April 4th. Is that correct? Will you please come and tell what it is we are doing that day?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The mayor's been kind enough to do, actually, it's a small reception, just to invite folks in to come dream with us about what the center can be. And then, we're going to have a grand opening, you know, everyone come on down and see when it's finished, but this is the dream portion, so.
Wonderful.
If folks can come join us, that would be great.
And I think that's from 4 till 6?
5:30 to 7:00.
5:30 to 7:00, all right. I'll be there. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. We have several information reports I'd like to comment, draw your attention to, that are in your binders, counselors. And we'll move on to the ordinances. Would the recorder please announce the first reading?
Ordinance Bill Number 613, relating to the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan, repealing SRC 64015 through SRC 64.240, creating new sections SRC 64.001 through SRC 64.030, and amending the Salem Area Comprehensive Policies Plan.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Thomas to move the staff recommendation. Is there any discussion? Counselor Clausen?
I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a good conversation with Ms. Woods today about this one, and I just wanted to make a couple of comments and ask maybe a clarifying question or two, if I may. First off, for counsel in general, Counselor Bennett and I have been working on this Unified Development Code for a while, which we had our last meeting last week, and my wife is thrilled, because that's been going on for three and a half years. Real close to three and a half years. And they had the coolest cake I've ever seen, with all the zoning printed on the frosting of the cake. It was pretty cool, actually. So, but with the Unified Development Code, this goes hand-in-hand with that. This is an attempt to try and clean up a very cumbersome portion of the code, which is our comprehensive plan, which has always been vague to me, and I really -- it's hard to understand what all is included in our comprehensive plan, because there are lots of different elements. So, as I was struggling through this, trying to get my head wrapped around it, our conversation really helped me out a lot of what this does, and I thought I'd clarify a couple of things. One is, we're deleting the meat of the comprehensive plan code that's in effect now. We're getting rid of it, and we're replacing it with new. So, as you read the first seven pages of the SRC that's attached to this, that's all brand-new. It's not being changed, it's all brand-new. With that, our comprehensive plan is the basis of our zoning code, and I'm really concerned about this, and I want to make sure we do this right, do it 100%, and we get all the public hearing and all the information we need out of it, just to make sure it's 100% what we need it to be. So, I want to just kind of raise the urgency a little bit, just to make sure we're all on board with that. The other thing about this is, it gives a lot better definition of what's included in the plan, and I wanted to ask staff, what is the process on this? It sounds like it -- I mean, obviously, we're referring it to Planning Commission with this motion. Does it come back to counsel for a public hearing? Can we request that it come back for a public hearing with a Planning Commission recommendation?
Yes, and Ms. Woods will respond.
Vicki Hardin Woods, your Community Development Director. Yes, the -- what will happen is, what we've recommended is that you refer this to the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing. They'll hold a public hearing, take testimony, and then they will make a recommendation to you, and the ordinance will come forward then for second reading. You are not required to have a public hearing at that stage, but we would recommend that you do do that, because while there aren't -- there's not really much, if any, policy changes here, it's still a very important component of what makes up our local laws and legislation, particularly related to land use. So, we would recommend that you do that when it comes back to you.
Just a point of clarification, the only changes to the comprehensive plan itself that are part of this ordinance are conforming amendments. And this ordinance is not about substantive changes to the comprehensive plan, it's about how you change the plan, how you amend the plan. And so, there aren't any big changes to the comprehensive plan. This is really about the process that you go through when you want to change the plan, and also, just having in one place a clear statement of what is, what the components of the comprehensive plan are.
Yeah. Thank you. And I -- yes, I left that out. I was talking to Vicki earlier, we were talking about that. This is mostly policy-neutral, with the exception of the process for amendment of. And the process for amendment of is much better here than it was before, in my opinion, but that's the point of the public hearing. So, anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. I didn't want it to just kind of glide by us. This is a pretty big deal, and I want to make sure that we're all on it when it comes back, and this is a big deal for us. And it's a big deal for our community as we move forward with people trying to move here and do work here, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other comments? All right, I've lost my place. Are we?
You have a motion on the floor.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor. We'll call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I believe we have another ordinance. Would the recorder please introduce that?
Ordinance Bill Number 1713, declaring and proclaiming, excuse me, certain territory located at 2518 Robbins Lane, southeast, annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District.
Thank you. And do we have a staff report for this?
That's just the first reading.
No, all right. Counselor Clausen?
I'd move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Clausen and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And our third ordinance bill, would the recorder please introduce that?
Ordinance Bill Number 2213, relating to parking, amending SRC 102.135 and 102.175.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the staff recommendation. Are there any questions, or is there discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And we have a second reading. Would the recorder please introduce that?
Ordinance Bill Number 513, relating to the Broadway High Street Relay Zone. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, amending SRC one thirty-eight point zero three zero. Counselor Clem?
Aye.
I beg your pardon, sorry. Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler is absent. Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Claussen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Benards?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. For public comment this evening, we have one person signed up, Tim Cowan. I saw you here. There you are. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Peterson and council members, I'm here to talk about the parking increase around the state Capitol. But before I do that, I want you to know that I hold you in the highest regard, and your staff is the best representation you could imagine.
Thank you.
And the first one is on Alice Street, there's a fire station. You couldn't see it because there was arthritis around it. Your public works people took charge of that, and they're gone.
Good.
So, now, the fire trucks can see the people coming down, and they can, the people can see the fire trucks. So, they did an excellent job, Mayor. Here's my, my question. As I know you're aware, the parking around the Capitol went up 100 percent not too long ago. And my concern is what that does to the impact on people of lower income to have access to the Capitol. I'm not a good example of it, but I got a ticket when I was there at four nineteen, and I had filled the meter. So, I think I came up with about a $28 expense for parking for that day. But that's beside the point. I want to know if increasing the parking by 100 percent, restricting the lower-income people's access to the Capitol is a violation of their rights to have access to the state government. And it kind of appears to me, anyway, that there's a kind of a disconnect between the city and the state through that parking increase. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would the city manager care to make any comment about that, or?
Well, I think you're asking a legal question.
Yeah, I think so.
About whether it violates rights. We, I can say that this recommendation came after a lot of thought and deliberation of a citizen parking task force, and the need to make sure that we're recovering the funds that we need for parking, as, you know, we have to do with other services that we have. I understand your point. I don't know that we can render a legal decision right now, so, but thank you for bringing that up.
Right. Thank you very much. We always appreciate seeing you. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, I have one other item of business, and that has to do with the, to announce the appointment to the Human Rights and Relations Advisory Commission, and you'll notice in your binder that we are appointing Nicholas Ditzler to the student position for a term expiring December thirty-first, 2014. And he lives in Ward Four, and he's a high school student, and I believe he's going to bring a lot of insight, both as a youth and representing, as he says in this letter, "Raised by parents of mixed ethnicities," he brings a demographic that likely is not represented on our Human Rights and Relations Commission. So, we're very pleased to be making that appointment, and always pleased when high school and middle school students, and particularly, high school students who are eligible for our commissions, put their hat in the ring. We're very happy about that. Thank you. All right, I don't believe that I need a motion on that, do I, for that? All right, that's it. Okay, and we have no councilor's items this evening. Seeing no further business, we are adjourned. And we have a work session now.